Good evening and welcome to the August 7, 2019, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. One additional item before we begin. This past week, Milton lost one of its most prominent citizens. Bob O'Leary grew up in Milton and was a lawyer, a prominent member of our community. He was town council in this town for 23 years between 1966 and 1989. There was a plaque to that effect in Town Hall downstairs, and he was a longtime resident and contributed much to this community. So I'd ask if we could all just take a moment of silence to reflect on Bob O'Leary, a great public servant for this town. Moving on, item three, Citizen Speak. And I think we have a mystery guest for Citizen Speak tonight, so if you'll sign in, please.
If you'd be honored to, thank you very much.
That was a reference to the old "What's My Line." They used to have mystery guests, and they asked them to sign in. I did. I definitely did.
Yeah, she adjusted herself. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to say I did.
I was kidding.
No, I'm happy to sign in.
We have to save that one.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our Select Board. Of course, thank you very much. Thank you, and of course, to our town treasurer. Why, she's sitting right back there, Mr. Treasurer. It's a privilege to be here tonight. My compliments for having a moment of silence tonight for Mr. O'Leary. Back in the '70s and the '80s, my father had the privilege of serving on this board, and Mr. O'Leary was the town council. And he was the town council many years before my father arrived on this board and several years thereafter, and he was a wonderful man, ended up being my friend. Which is a wonderful thing when your parents' friends end up being your friends as well, and a fine gentleman, and he was also a World War II veteran. So thank you very much. Thank you for lowering the flag to halfstaff in his honor. It was a fitting touch for a great man. So thank you very much. Tonight, and I thank you for your indulgence here, to the members of the board, it's my privilege to be here, to a Select Board member, Mrs. Collins, Mr. Chair, Select Board Member, Mr. Farrington, and Town Administrator Dennehy, and thank you very much to our Executive Secretary of the Board and Selectman for having me. I simply come before you tonight to provide you with a budget update. As you are all aware, last week, the governor signed the budget. He did not veto any monetary line items. He vetoed some policy and language line items, and I just want to simply, obviously, as Speaker O'Neill once said, "All politics are local," so I'd just like to provide you with the line items that I inserted into the Senate budget and how they fared. In terms of our local aid overall, $3,411,993 will be coming to the town of Milton. Now, it's a combination of lottery aid, general local aid, you know, it's two forms, lottery aid being one, and additional assistance. This was all combined back in 2010. Chapter 70 for the town of Milton will be increased, $9,33,561. Chapter 90 monies for the town for our own bridge repair will be $630,314, and I know Mr. Dennehy, being a former DPW commissioner, that warms your heart. I understand that.
Thank you, Senator.
And also, some amendments that I filed over the years, and did so again this year, that survived the process, and I successfully filed these amendments during the Senate budget process, in some cases debated on the floor of the Senate for them, and they survived, of course, and they survived the conference committee with the House and Senate, and Governor Baker saw fit to let them survive the process and not veto any of them, which, of course, I appreciated. First and foremost, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which does wonderful work here under the leadership of Ms. Stillman and Mrs. Kinsella. Once again, I filed an amendment for $30,000 for the Coalition to help them do what they do so well, and this will be forthcoming to the town of Milton shortly. It survived the process. I also filed an amendment for $20,000 for the Milton Police to engage in speed patrols on Randolph Ave. Obviously, that tragically and sadly has become an issue of life and death for the town of Milton and for the whole region as a whole, as it's a major thoroughfare. This, I believe, will go a long way to helping the Milton Police do what they do so well, to put extra patrols out on Randolph Ave and quite simply slow cars down, and also send a message, because we know the same people traverse Randolph Ave who are commuters who don't necessarily live in the town, going home, going into work, going home, and obviously it sends a message as to what the speed limit should be, and obviously, that speed tragically kills. Also, I filed an amendment, which survived the budget process, for $7,200 for the town of Milton to purchase an electric vehicle car charging station. And that's something that I collaborated on with Mr. Dennehy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
And Chair Zulus, thank you very much for your advice on that. Sustainable Milton does wonderful work, and the town of Milton, I believe, has broken new grounds with the electric vehicle car charging station, and I compliment the Board, the Select Board, for installing it over Town Hall. This will enable the town of Milton to site another vehicle charging station somewhere in the town, yet to be determined, I believe.
Actually, Senator, we've chosen the Wharf area.
Terrific.
The municipal parking lot down there.
Terrific.
And we actually have a second location that we're taking a look at, so thank you very much for that funding. That process should get underway very soon.
Well, I think that's outstanding. You were thrown around that location when I was formulating the amendment, so I think it's great that that's another location. I'm committed, going forth in the next budget process, to filing a similar amendment, seeking another $7,200, so that second location can come to fruition, and obviously, support what the town of Milton's done so well in Sustainable Milton, because in the end, it's our future. I also have filed an amendment for the second consecutive year, seeking $30,000 to purchase additional street hockey boards to set up another street hockey program. And this amendment, of course, was successful in the Senate budget process, survived the conference committee, and it was signed into law by Governor Baker last week. So the town of Milton will now have $30,000 to purchase what, in essence, is another street hockey court. And thank you very much. Of course, Mr. Dennehy, in another life, was in the hockey business, and thank you for pricing out those boards.
Yeah, it was a huge success, Senator. The first that we temporarily had down at the high school before we turned those two basketball courts at Guile Road, which are now under construction. We actually had a site visit yesterday with Tom McCarthy from Operations and John Thompson about permanently relocating that set of boards you got us last year down at Kellyfield parking lot, so there'll be a lot of activity going on in Kellyfield.
I think it's terrific. And now we'll have a second set of boards. As you're all aware, the street hockey program in Milton has taken off. There's about 400 families that are involved now. John Shea and Jamie Heggie have done a wonderful job. I think it's terrific, because you don't have to have a desire to skate, you don't have to have an ability to skate, and economically, hockey's a very expensive sport, but street hockey, for $10, you can play in this program, and there'll be plenty of options for children all around town. Furthermore, I successfully filed an amendment back in the Senate budget process, as we talked about back in the spring, seeking $500,000 for renovations for Yule and Rink and refurbishments and reconstruction. I also specified within the amendment that carried the day, of course, and Governor Baker just signed into law last week, that the first $125,000 will be designated to building a women's locker room with full accommodations, which I think is tremendous. Women's ice hockey is one of the fastest-growing sports in North America, as we all know, worldwide, actually, and we have wonderful hockey programs at the high school for women. Milton Youth Hockey, of course, is for boys and girls, and the boys and girls are doing great in our street ice hockey programs, and I think it's wonderful that we will have full accommodations, a locker room for our women's ice hockey program at Milton High, and for all the young ladies who play hockey up at Yule and Rink. It's fitting, and it's long overdue, so I'm very proud of that. But it also will have another $375,000 to renovate and refurbish the rink, which I think is great. Of course, I'm dating myself here now. I skated at that rink when it had chain-link fences around it and a roof, so I think it's great. It will be taken to the next level now with what is an outstanding program for our boys and girls around town. Of course, my father will say he skated there when they didn't have a roof, so, but time marches on. Also, this year, I successfully filed a budget amendment in the Senate for the Trailside Museum for $500,000. Now, of course, I am biased, because I grew up as a little guy. Much, I believe, Mrs. Collins' husband, Harris, went up there, and of course, I know Select Member Farrington spent some time at the Trailside Museum growing up, and I know your daughters have spent time there, Mr. Chair. But as a child, my mother brought myself and my sisters up there. It's a wonderful partnership with the Mass Audubon Society, and I believe the $500,000 will make up for the lean times that the Trailside has endured. It's a wonderful asset for the town of Milton, but also for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with the educational, animal science, life science that's brought to life there. It is the base of the Blue Hills, and it essentially is the de facto visitor center for the Blue Hills Reservation, which is a treasure for us all. Furthermore, our total budget will end up being $43.1 billion for FY 2020. And we're also making an investment that will bring our stabilization fund, which is, in essence, our reserve bank account for the Commonwealth, over $3 billion. So it's important for several reasons. That money, as you all know, is used to infuse the state budget in terms of an economic downturn, but beyond that, it increases our bond rating, which is at its highest right now, which, of course, makes it cheaper to borrow money from Wall Street, as you folks are all aware. So I believe we've made some great investments in programs and infrastructure around the Commonwealth that will improve the quality of life for us all, particularly in this town, and I also believe we've prepared for the future in case of an economic downturn, which we all hope never comes, but inevitably, it is cyclical. And I might add that, of course, Representative Driscoll, Representative Cullinane voted for this very budget, and I thank them very much for their collaboration, as I do thank all of you for your collaboration and your cooperation, Mr. Farrington, Mr. Zulus, and of course, Mrs. Collins, and Ms. Conlon, and Mr. Wells. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator, and thank you for all your efforts. Citizen Speak isn't intended to be interactive, but I just thought I'd just ask you one question about the home rule petition on the special police officers, and do we know what the status of that is?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That slipped my mind. The home rule petition, of course, which this board has supported strongly, which will enable Milton Police retired officers to be appointed as special police officers up to the age of 70 with their physical to ascertain fitness, was signed into law today by the governor. So thank you very much. I talked to Chief King about it today, and Lieutenant Collins, and they're, of course, extremely happy about this. I believe it's a win for the town, because with every police detail on our streets, the vendors pay monies to the town of Milton to pay for the services of our outstanding police officers. Quite often, as this board's well aware, and Mr. Dennehy, the Milton Police Department can't fill all the details. Can't fill. So details go unfilled, which can be a public safety hazard, and also, it's a revenue loss for the town. So this will enable retired police officers, pending physicals, up to the age of 70, to perform details which they're experienced. It keeps experience from the job. We all know we have an outstanding police department here in the town. It keeps retired officers who are still physically and mentally fit to do a job and keep that experience here in the town, and also make money for the town while they're doing it. So I think it's a win all around, but the governor saw fit to sign it. Representative Cullinane, Representative Driscoll shepherded its passage through the House, and I was privileged and honored to file it and get it through the Senate. I believe we secured its passage in rapid fashion. So I thank you for the question, and more than happy to answer any other questions.
Again, it's not intended, but I think since we have the senator here, if there's any additional questions, we can break with tradition just a little bit.
Sure.
I don't have a question, just to thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Collins. It's always a privilege to work with you.
Well, I know how hard you worked to get these things passed, and I'm thrilled about the home rule petition, so.
Thank you. I believe that will be a win all around.
Yes.
As I mentioned earlier, it's going to keep experience, and forgive the lack of expression, but it's going to keep experience in what is our law enforcement, community active, and also will retain revenue for the town. So I think it's a win all around.
Great work on the line item, too, for the hockey rinks, the hockey courts. I mean, as you said, those were a huge success, and I think that could be a line item every budget cycle. And, you know, I think as many of them as we could get, I think the town would use. I mean, it's been a smash-hit, so.
And I know firsthand you've been a sponsor over the years, Mr. Farrington, and I know, Mr. Zulus, you've been down there, you've observed the program, and of course, Mrs. Collins, you and I, we've talked about it before, and I know what a strong booster you are of the athletics in town and keeping all our children in productive activity, so thank you very much for your support and your collaboration.
Well, thank you, Senator. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you all.
And I think we can, it's probably a community happenings, but I know your concert that was scheduled for tonight has been canceled.
Yes.
But has been rescheduled, so if we want to get some free publicity for your rescheduled concert.
Thank you very much. In consultation with Barney Dvor, who does a great job in the band that I had retained for tonight for the concert, I made the decision to postpone. Of course, it hasn't rained, but I made the decision to postpone partly because of the fact that I knew, no matter what, the ground would be wet, and after all, it's a great event for young families, and it's a great event for seniors. And I know a lot of our young families like to bring blankets and lay out dinner on the grass for their children, and just the wet ground just, to me, didn't seem suitable for concerts. And we're going to have it on September 4, which, of course, is a school night, but if parents want to give themselves and their children a pass for the night, we'd love to have you all, and I'll be serving cold drinks and cookies. I won't be baking the cookies, though.
That's probably fortunate for us.
I don't want a lot of people to miss school the following day, so, but I hope you all will be able to make it, and thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you all. No, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else for Citizen Speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Item four is a discussion with John Mulcahy of Mike's 5K. We're going to defer that item until August 21. Mr. Mulcahy had a matter that required his attention and was unable to make it this evening, so we'll defer that till August 21. Next item, item five, a discussion of the Bring Your Own Bottle policy, and I think we have Attorney DeLuca from Murphy Hesse to take us through this discussion. And maybe our town administrator can talk about how this arose and just come into our sights.
Sure. Thanks, Dave, for joining us. We had a brief conversation. Local resident in the town had mentioned in passing one day about the good old days when you could bring your own bottle to places in the town, and we started to take a look at it and see what the laws were and the rules and regulations around it. Mr. DeLuca's well-versed in this and took a look at some of the other communities and what they did, and I was enlightened by members of the Milton Police Department that, back in the day, people would go to Stella's at night and bring their own bottle. So I didn't know it was something that the town could adopt or even think about doing, so that started us down the road with a quick conversation with Mr. DeLuca, and then he started taking a look at rules and regulations that were out there, and figured it'd be a good topic for discussion as we proceed through, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Mr. DeLuca, if you don't mind, could you maybe take us through the process and the legal basis for this?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. You know, as you're all aware, Massachusetts is very well-regulated with respect to the service of alcohol. Chapter 138 and its many sections really provides a roadmap for the service of alcohol to the public in Massachusetts. Milton, we're all aware, is not a quota town, so that the licenses that are issued here in Milton are issued by way of special legislation to the individual applicants or sites, which are decided by your town meeting and asked for at the state legislature. And those, by and large, are restaurants that are operated here in Milton that look for the privilege of serving alcohol. There is, again, among the statutory scheme that is here in Massachusetts, there really is no groundwork for Bring Your Own Bottle. It's reasonable to say that, in fact, any town or restaurant that is not licensed, or a town that is not licensing a restaurant, or any restaurant that is not licensed, in the absence of a policy relative to Bring Your Own Bottle, it would be up to the proprietor to decide whether or not he or she would permit that type of bottle service for themselves on their property. That's why I suggested to your town administrator that it would be a good idea for the town, should you be considering such a privilege here in Milton, to get out in front of that with a policy that would allow you to essentially regulate whether and under what circumstances that service would be permitted. So as I've explained to Mr. Dennehy, there needs to be sort of a threshold question answered by your board, and that is whether or not you would choose to permit bottle service or Bring Your Own Bottle in Milton. And if you do, then I provided a draft of very typical regulations that I know have been vetted by other towns here in Massachusetts that I think would be well-suited for application here in Milton. So this, you know, fills a little bit of a gap that exists presently, whereas, as I said to Mr. Dennehy, you know, anything goes right at the moment. We don't have a policy in Milton that is up or down. Once you choose that, and you very well may choose no, not to permit Bring Your Own Bottle service, and that's a judgment to be made by your board. If you do, the recommendation is that we have a set of regulations in place so the expectations are set and may be met, and likely, you know, you would look for regulations that are very similar to what are in place with respect to our license holders. So that's where we are with the discussion. I know that it's something for your board to consider, and I've suggested a notice and hearing, so that the public could comment, and, you know, you may decide, based on that, how it is you would like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Questions, comments from the members?
Go ahead.
And I know this is the first time we're considering this, and we passed around these draft regulations. I think it's fair to say that, I think, and I think we probably all agree, that it's a good idea to have a public hearing. We've noticed that public hearing, and our intention is to have a public hearing two weeks from today.
Right.
On August 21, to consider the first issue, the threshold issue, whether we should permit this type of activity in Milton, and then the secondary issue, which is what would be the regulations. And maybe we can publish these draft regulations, Mike, in advance of the public hearings, so the public can see these fairly elaborate 16 regulations that would govern a Bring Your Own Bottle permit here in Milton, and perhaps, Mr. DeLuca, you could just briefly go through, if we adopt the policy and choose to permit this type of activity, there's still a process for, at least under this policy, for approval or denial of a permit?
That's correct. The way the policy and regulations are constructed, it would require an applicant, and we'll call them a permit applicant, to come before your board to be sure that you're comfortable with the physical surroundings and the details of that service and how it is to be conducted, and to make sure your permit holder understands the details, which, as I said earlier, to kind of mimic the kind of rules and regulations for all our license holders, so that there is adequate supervision, tips, training, and the type of safety considerations you would have for any license holder, including, you know, the dimensions of the premises, where the alcohol is going to be served, and by whom. And you have a choice also to determine beer and wine only or including spirits. I've suggested the beer and wine as a good starting point in the regulations. That's very typical, I think, of what we see around the Commonwealth for those restaurateurs that do not have a license to serve alcohol, and one of the conditions here is you cannot have a Bring Your Own Bottle permit on top of an existing license. It would be only for those that do not have some other form of license, either by way of an annual license or even a one-day license. It simply would not apply, only to those.
The common victualers.
Right, and generally, it is for common victualers. This is where it gets a little bit tricky here in Milton, too, because I know you have, in addition to common victualers, you have other clubs and dining arrangements that are not necessarily common victualers. That's why I've kind of melded the regulations to include private clubs or other food service that you experience here in Milton. I think you can make it applicable to all.
And actually, in the draft that we have, the draft regulations, it would require a permit holder to also hold a common victual license.
Well, that is, again, the usual arrangement. I mean, it's.
So it's not just anyone who wants to have an event, who could, it would have to be someone who already holds.
Well, they're just going to one day.
That's right.
So they must, it's conditional upon having the common victualers, and then you apply for this. That's right.
That's right.
That is the usual structure, but, you know, we're also trying to anticipate, you know, other food service that may not have a common victual license. For example, if there is a facility that is simply serving private events by way of a use of a caterer, how do we make sure that our policy here would be applicable to that circumstance? So, you know, we're trying to, you know, make this workable in that situation as well.
Any other questions, comments? No?
Not at this time, no.
Dave, in your research of other communities, is there a fee involved with this?
No, I didn't see other than a nominal fee for the permit. No, it's not structured the same as an alcohol license would be. So I think that would be at the discretion of the board.
Okay. And just so it's clear, on the 21st, this would be a public hearing to consider both the threshold issue and any regulations, but will not be to consider any particular permits or any particular, this is actually just to see if the board wants to go down this route, basically.
Right, and then, you know, at some later time, you could mark a hearing for any particular business or interest or restaurant that wanted to apply if you were to institute, you know, the option. Then you would have a separate hearing on that request.
Of course, you know, with notice to the abbotors and this one.
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Ms. Collins.
I think one concern that I have is that whatever language we arrive at, if we decide this is something that we want to pursue, we make sure that it's clear who can apply and who can't. I'm thinking about the wonderful historic estates we have in this town and the nonprofits associated with them, and I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable extending this to them. I'm not sure that I wouldn't, but I just think it's something to keep in mind for us to consider who pulls the bulk of one-day liquor licenses and for that to be part of our discussion.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Mr. DeLuca, we're going to set the public hearing, or we already have, I think.
We have, yeah.
Set up a notice for August 21. It may be helpful, if you're available.
I'd be glad to be here.
To be here.
Yeah.
We may have residents who have questions, and you may be able to provide any legal guidance that we need at that point, so that would be great if you could be here for that.
Yeah, glad to.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you, Dave.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work on this.
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item six, and this is the item for our town treasurer, Jim McAuliffe, is here about sewer. town treasurer, Jim McCullough, is here about sewer bond sales. Mr. McCullough, welcome. Hi, Jim.
Good evening. This bond is from the MWRA, and it's going to be used to remediate the storm water flowing into our source system, which we're paying for because it's needed. And it's a good deal for the town. The bond, we're only borrowing $287,500, is a matching grant of $862,500, for a total of $1,150,000. It's an interest-free loan, and we're going to be paying it back over 10 years at $28,750 a year. So with the grant and the money it's going to save down the road by getting the storm water out of the source system, it's a winner.
And Jim, just to be clear, this bond is just for the $287,500?
Yes, yeah, the rest of it's a grant.
Rest of it's a grant?
Yeah.
That's great, that's great.
We love grants.
We do.
Those are good.
We'll take all the grants we can get. All right, so we have, any other questions for Mr. McCullough?
No.
We're going to need, we're going to need Tony here, yes. We're going to need Tony here.
Yeah, this is to fix any leaks in the system, is that the shortage is needed. So if we can get this water out of the source system, it's going to save the town a bundle on that end.
That's great, that's great. All right, so we'll just wait a moment because, given that we have three, unfortunately, Ms. Conlon and Mr. Wells weren't able to make it this evening, so we need to make sure we have a quorum for our vote. Mr. Farrington had to step out for a minute, so we'll have to have him here for the vote. So, Jim, I don't know if you want to sing a song while we're waiting.
No, my voice.
Do a cap tan. But no, this seems like, this seems like a very good deal for the town.
Yeah, this is a win for the town.
Yeah, this seems, we appreciate you bringing it to us.
Every year, the town meeting passes an article. We don't always use it unless there is a matching grant go along with it.
Right.
Sure, our town engineer already has specific locations where they're going to use this money, so...
Yeah, they're waiting for it. It's going to be funded on August 22nd.
Yep. So Tony, I know you had some of the background on this. This is a sewer bond sale that's going to be in conjunction with a grant from MWRA to remediate storm water, and, you know, as Jim has described, it's a win-win for the town, given the grant, the no-interest loan?
Yeah, it's no-interest.
No-interest loan, and this is for the bond for $287,500 that will allow us to get into the program with the million, is it a million-dollar grant?
A million, 150,000.
Million-dollar grant, so in Jim's words, it's a win-win for the town. Do you have any questions, or do you need any more background on it?
No, if Treasurer McCullough thinks it's a win-win for the town, then that's good enough for me.
All right. Okay, great, all right, so we have a motion. Does someone want to make the motion?
I move that the sale of the $287,500 sewer bond of the town dated August 19th, 2019, to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, is hereby approved, and the town treasurer or other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond shall be payable without interest on August 15th of the years and in the principal amounts as follows. Year 2020, installment $28,750. 2021, $28,750. 2022, $28,750. 2023, $28,750. 2024, $28,750. 2025, $28,750. 2026, $28,750. 2027, $28,750. 2028, $28,750. And 2029, $28,750.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second motion?
I move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
All right, who has the bonds, sign them before you leave tonight.
Oh, okay, all right, we'll make sure, do you need them, do you need them now, or can, is tomorrow morning?
No.
I'll deliver them to him.
I have to get them to the town clerk tomorrow morning, just in order to...
Okay, we'll sign them tonight and make sure you have them by tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thanks, Jim. All right, item seven, discussion regarding RCN expansion, and I see Jeff Stone in the audience, and Jeff, if you're not too shy, maybe you could join us up at the, up at the table here, because Jeff was one of the major movers behind, behind what we've achieved here. And Mike can fill in the background, I can just give a little bit of it. It wasn't too long ago that, bless you, it wasn't too long ago that Jeff reached out to, reached out to a couple of us and said, "Well, hey, why isn't there more competition in town with cable, and why isn't RCN, why don't RCN cover more homes and cover, you know, more neighborhoods with their..." And it appears to me, and Jeff took it on his own, to read the contract and say, "Look, it appears to me that they have an obligation to do that." And so with that impetus from Jeff, we began to have negotiations with RCN last, beginning of the summer, really, and suggested to them and told them that they had this obligation. And the result of that is that they are beginning a project where they are going to connect 2,100 additional homes in Milton to RCN to give the residents more options, really. Whether Comcast is good or RCN is good, I mean, that's something to do with those companies, but our role here is to give the residents as many options as possible. And so my understanding is, and Mike can fill this in, that after those, that we're at the point now that RCN is working with Eversource, because Eversource owns the poles, and RCN has to put their, they have to string on, go along the poles, string their lines along the poles, but RCN is now working with Eversource to do that, and the project is just about ready to get started. Maybe, Mike, you can fill in a little bit?
Correct, yeah, so Jeff, to your right is a map. And that map, I don't have it electronically yet, that was sent over by, actually walked over by RCN, but basically, the yellow portion of that map, the 2,100 homes that Chair Zulus mentioned, which will bring the town up to that 80% number of homes that are serviced, will be serviced by RCN. Erin Engstrom from Eversource is our contact person. She's been working with Dave Tabor from RCN, as Chair Zulus eloquently said, Verizon and Eversource own the poles. They share, they share ownership of the poles, and in order to do the aerials feeds for this, they need permission, and it's, there's some operational aspects to it as to where these wires will hang on their poles. So that project has been started. I got confirmation from Erin Engstrom today that her and Verizon, the Eversource rep and Verizon rep are going to walk the poles, the first 200 poles. I can't tell you how many poles exactly they're going to touch, but just for logistics, it's your part of Milton, your neighborhood, a stretch of Randolph Ave, we heard from many residents up off of Randolph Ave, Sassamon, Ridgewood, Hilltop, that area wasn't serviced as well, that will also be part of this expansion, so...
The floor is yours, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, thank you very much for following through on this, your work with RCN, greatly appreciated. This certainly represents huge progress towards what I was advocating for and what my neighbors wanted as well. I am curious, for the rest of the town, I know it's a big undertaking for a utility or RCN to wire up everywhere, and yet, according to the contract, any home that wishes to have service pretty much is supposed to be able to avail themselves of RCN service. So for others in Milton who aren't part of this current plan, will they eventually be able to have service, or will there be some parts of Milton that won't be able to have service? Do you know?
So the conversation that we had, we started in early summer, as Chair Zulus said, this is the first step. This is an easier fix because it's all aerial, there's no excavating of conduit that would have to go underground. That is being explored as well. So to answer that question, this is, this is phase two, if you will. The first phase is what you see in green, which was rolled out years ago when the contract was signed, but the commitment from RCN was to take a look at the other pockets of town and see, obviously, it's, there are cost prohibitive, there's some cost prohibitiveness to it for them, and that's a business problem that they have. They understand that, they're going to take a look at it. This was the quicker, easier, let's get this out the door and get the town another 2,100 homes of service, but they did not shy away from connectivity in the entire town. That's something they're certainly looking into.
Okay, that's great to hear. So again, I just want to express my appreciation, and I know a lot of people had to touch this, you folks and other people that aren't here, to make this happen, so greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Jeff, and, you know, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has a question for Jeff or anyone else, but, you know, for anyone else out there, this is a resident who had an issue and came to us, and, you know, we're able to help out, and so that's what we try to do, and that's what we, you know, that to me, that, you know, Jeff Mullen says, he always talks about good government, and, you know, to me, that's good government because it was an issue that came up, and you were right, and we were able to carry it through, so still got to make sure it happens. You know, the purchase orders have been cut, there's still work to be done, the work needs to be done, so we need to keep, keep our thumb on them to make sure it's done, but hopefully things will be done, you know, throughout the fall.
Yeah, and if I might add, an electronic version of that half-hazard map that's sitting on the table will be provided tomorrow or Friday at the latest, so I'll put it online.
So anybody in town can look at it.
People can take a look at it, yeah.
Great. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I would just like to say thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I wanted to thank Ms. Conlon and also Christine Stanton, because I know they sat at the conference table in the Cronin, looking over maps and the contract, and so I appreciate, it was a real team effort, and again, just thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yep, thank you very much, and of course, Katie Conlon was the first person I contacted, and she was very helpful as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
And if I might add, also thanks to Jeff and the other residents that we received calls from off that Randolph Ave thing. This is very hard to coordinate because you have multiple utilities involved, so each of the utilities have really stepped up to the plate. Tom Steele and Dave Tabor at RCN have been very helpful, Erin Engstrom at Eversource, and Stan Yusevich at Verizon, so when you get those multi-jurisdictional things, it gets a little bit convoluted, but as the chair said, the work orders are in. Now, I'll keep my thumb down on them and make, and make sure, keep us posted.
Arms up.
All right? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
I appreciate all their work.
All right, item eight, this is a discussion from prior meetings, and we have a little bit more information on the harbor master position, and maybe Mr. Dennehy can tell us where we stand on hiring a new harbor master.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I reported to this board on July 31st that the personnel board, personnel board had some questions with the previous look of the harbor master position. It was presented to them again on Monday, January 29th, and with a couple of tweaks. Paige Eppolito, the Assistant Town Administrator for Human Resources, distributed the latest version of that with unanimous personnel board approval. She actually went so far as to put together a potential job posting, should this board approve it and its content. And we talked to Andy Waugh, Town Council, just about some of the questions that had been raised, who has the authority to appoint, what's the process for posting the position, and then who has the authority over the harbor master. So 99% of that, those questions have been answered. The posting is ready to go out. I will say, it's in, it's the first step in what the Milton Landing Committee has been working on. Both members of the Milton Landing Committee, Richard Wells, who's the chair of that committee, and Katie Conlon, who's been working diligently with the MPIC, as well as a lot of stuff going on in the Worf area, are not here tonight, but that would be the first step in the process of taking a look at the landing overall. So approved by the personnel board, some comments that were disseminated this week by Andy Waugh, and up for discussion with this group, so. But very happy with the process. There were questions raised a couple of months ago that kind of made us take a hard look at it. We looked at other communities and how they do it. Some put it under the police department, some put it under the select board. Last time we talked about it, the select board would like to delegate that authority to me as the appointing authority, and I wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly welcome that. But just, we've learned a lot about harbor masters in Massachusetts in this process, so. Hope that gives you a good introduction or description of where we are.
It does. Questions, comments, the members? So, Mr. Farrington?
Mike, if you were to be the appointing authority, you would have supervisory authority, and that individual would report directly to you.
Correct.
That is correct?
Yes.
Because I think, I recall reading somewhere in this wonderful, wonderful synopsis that Andy Waugh put together, which I think is fantastic, by the way, very clear, very concise, very thorough, there was, he left the door open, I think, as to whether or not we, as a board, could step in and supervise that position directly. And I suppose that we could. I just didn't know if we would need to take additional steps to do that, if it's something we could just step in and do, I'm not sure. I want to see if I can find it now. But continue the discussion while I look for it.
Yeah, maybe I can add a little color to this, you know, and this goes back to the Strong Town Administrator legislation that was approved, and I think it's fair to say that there was a change from what was proposed to what was ultimately passed, and there was a comma moved, and the result of the comma being moved is that the legislation gives the town administrator the authority to appoint, supervise, and direct all department heads, but because the comma was moved, it suggests that town employees would still be under the Board of Selectmen, or the select board jurisdiction, which I don't think was intended for the town administrator to point the department heads, but the select board to appoint the employees. So that's something that, that's really an issue for another day, but part of what the review by Town Council was, was under that, under the Strong Town Administrator statute, was it appears, based on, based on the comma being moved, and Tony, if you look at that, if you look at section 2D, that comma after employees...
Yeah.
Probably should have gone before the end, so that it should have read, I think, supervise, direct, all department heads, except for the Consolidated Facilities Director, comma, and town employees who are under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, right? So that would have given the town administrator the authority to appoint department heads and the employees. The way it reads now that the comma was moved to after employees suggests that the town administrator appoints the department heads, but the select board appoints the employees, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, frankly, but that's where we are, right? So the fix on that, until we get that legislation at least looked at and see if, see if it needs to be fixed, fix on that, I think, is if we see fit for, for the town administrator to appoint this position, and I think that's what was intended when we had a Strong Town Administrator, we can delegate that authority to him, and that's, I think that's the proper role given. Ms. Conlon, you may have something to add.
No, I'm agreeing with you, that's how I read it as well.
Yep, yep. So we have, technically, under the statute as it's drafted now, it suggests that we have the authority, but we can delegate that authority if, and I mean, I think that's what's been suggested by Town Council, and certainly by, by the town administrator.
Right.
And Mike, or this is, this question's open to anyone, quick rundown in terms of hours per week, pay rate slash compensation, stipend, and also where is that money being drawn from? What's the source of...
So part of the discussion with the Milton Landing Committee, and something that we'll touch upon later, I'll answer the last question. I'll answer the last question first, is the source of revenue will be a Chair Wells, and I say Chair Wells because he's the Chair of the Milton Landing Committee, former Chair of this board, has suggested that money that is derived from the landing stay in the landing. So the rent that, that will come from the RFP for 25 Worf, 41 Worf Street, will then stay in-house to make, you know, day-to-day maintenance and be the $10,000. It's set at a $10,000 stipend. That's universally where most of these harbor masters stipend. Where it fits, yeah. And it'll come, and the source of revenue will be derived from money that comes from, that's generated in, in the Worf area.
And there's a minimum number of hours that he has, that this person has to put in in order to qualify for that, right? So I mean, maybe I'm getting too much into the weeds on this, and if so, you know, let me know. But I was trying to determine or understand like what the schedule would be. Or is it really up to him? I mean, there's an ebb and a flow down there in terms of activity. And so sometimes you really want a presence down there on the weekends or in the mornings. Say sometimes not so much. And so I'm just trying to get an idea.
Yeah, a little bit to be determined, right? It's obviously a lot quieter down there when the boats come out of the water in, in November, and it's a lot busier when boats are getting ready. But it's, yeah, so it'll probably work itself out. But just, I, I don't really have that answer yet. But it's, 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 I won't say it's on a need basis, but you know, it's a, that's a very busy place down there. And it, it, it's probably going to get busier. So I, I don't think there'll be a lack of hours spent down there for, for this person, him or her. But I think it's kind of going to be a work in progress. I've managed a lot of municipal employees. I've never managed a harbor master before, so this, I can put this on my resume one day. But there are, I mean, I'll be reaching out to Waymouth and Braintree and Quincy. The Boston Officer, Chair Wells is, is very friendly with, so some best practices. It, it'll be money well spent.
Now, one issue is, as I understand, some communities have the, the roles sit within the Police Department, the role of harbor master, while others don't. And the suggestion from Personnel Board and from, from Mike is that the harbor master not sit within the, the Police Department. And Mike, can you, can you address what the pros and cons of that are?
Yeah, I think if, if, if it comes from the Police Department, then there's a certain requirement with civil service and the, and the posting of that job. And there may be some conflicts of interest if it, if it's from within the department, whether that person is working as a quote-unquote "police officer" on his shift, or if it's, if it's, if it's someone that's working in the capacity of the harbor master. So all policing authority for this person will go through the Police Department. I envision, let's say, the harbor master's down there and finds some type of criminal activity, whatever it might be. Very similar to any other department head or employee in town, that will get referred to the Milton Police Department through, through a 911 call or however it may take place. That it's separate from the Police Department. It's, there's certain acts, and I don't have, I think it's 402. I read so many acts and, and sections this week regarding it. But this qualified candidate must meet the requirements of Chapter 422 of the Acts of 2008, Mass. General Law, Chapter 102, right? So there's, there's a set of requirements that this person's going to have to qualify for.
Yep.
But, but none of that will be with, with a badge and, and under the guise of the Police Department. Any policing activity will be, will be transferred over to the Milton Police Department.
So there's one, one gating issue, I think. And that is that Town Council has suggested that if this, if this position is not going to sit within the Police Department, that we just need to vet any other issues and any other potential conflicts that could arise. And so I think, and I think we need, before we, before we vote on this, frankly, I think we need Town Council to, to, you know, thoroughly vet that issue. Since this, if it's not going to sit within the Police Department, then I think we need Town Council to vet the issue of, if there's any, any, any conflicts, if it's not within the Police Department. And so, so I, so I think, I think we need, my view is we need to wait until Council, Town Council does that. And frankly, I'd like to hear from Mr. Wells and Ms. Conlon, since they're on the Worf Committee as well. I think they're in favor of this, but like to have, like to hear from them. So, so my view is, is, is I'd like, I'd like to defer voting on this until we, till we get the final answer from Town Council on citing the position outside of the Police Department. And then, you know, hopefully hear from either Mr. Wells or Ms. Conlon in session as well. That's, that's my view. I don't know if any of the members have a different, different view.
That works for me. I like that approach. Perfect.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, and if I, if I might add, just the Milton Landing Committee, the sooner the better with this. Putting this position in place would benefit, benefit the town, the sooner we can get it in. This board meets again on August 21st. I think we put it back on the agenda then for a vote. If approved, then we, we post the job quickly and we could have someone in that position by Labor Day.
And there's no downside? I'm sorry, Tony.
Oh, you want someone in there that quickly?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I think, I think we can work our way, way, way through the winter. And, you know, when the boats come out of the water, there's some act, there's a lot of activity there. Kind of like when, when we winterize.
Sure, sure, sure.
That, that I think there's a need, need for a presence down there.
All right.
So.
And there's no downside to, to the extra two weeks, just to vet these final two issues?
No, no, that, that comment caught me as, as well, that conflict of interest comment that Town Council notified. So that was the 1% I was talking about that we, we hadn't quite cleared up.
Yep.
So, but I'm, I'm in a much better place than we were in July or late June when we, when we first heard this, so.
Great. All right, any other comments, questions? So I guess we'll put this on for the 21st and hopefully get it done and move on. All right, item nine, Select Board Appointments. So we voted on these last time, subject to any changes. And I don't know if, I think some of the members were going to connect to see if they wanted to move. I don't know if that's happened. And, and you know, primarily, you know, Tony, you, what, what we did was, we, we voted them, but we said, hey, look, if you, if you have any, you were going to talk to, have some discussions with Katie. And so, so it's subject to change if, but we thought we should just go ahead and get things going. But, but anyway, so if there's any comments, questions on that, we can, again, we can take it up tonight. We can talk about it, or we can, you know, take it up, you know, in the future as well.
I didn't get a chance to connect with Katie. But as these committees are listed here with the, with the members' names attached, I have no objection to anything.
Okay, great, 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 okay. All right, subject always to anyone bringing something up, just let us know if, and then we can, we can get going on these things. Ms. Collins, anything on this?
No, thank you.
Great, all right. Item 10, Discussion Approval of the January 2020 Special Town Meeting Warrant Closing Date. And again, Mr. Dennehy, we, we voted in our last meeting to cancel the October Town, October Special Town Meeting and, and hold a Special Town Meeting on January 13, 2020. And so we need to have a warrant closing date. And so I think Mr. Dennehy has suggested October 15th. And maybe, Mike, you could kind of walk us through how we get that date and how that makes sense.
Correct. So we, we need to give the warrant committee, we need, we need to give town boards time to put these warrants together, these articles, Town Meeting articles together. And in fairness to the warrant committee, we need to give the warrant committee a, a good bit of time to hear these articles and vet them out properly. The book, the warrants would need to be at the printer shop for December 19th, I believe, for the January 13th, to get them in residence homes a week before the, the town meeting would take place. So we kind of backed into that, that date. I'm comfortable with that. It's, it's 11 weeks from, Town Meeting is 11 weeks later than it would have been on the last Monday in October. And this, this lines up. It's a Tuesday because the 14th is Columbus Day. October 15th is a Tuesday, so we'll, we'll push it out one day. But it's, it's almost exactly the amount of time that we would ask for an October Special Town Meeting. So October 15th for the warrant close date. Why don't we go to the printer on December 19th and have the Special Town Meeting January 13th of 2020?
Questions, comments? And Mike, no issue with the, the holidays since now we're going to have, we're going to have the holidays in the middle of New Year's and everything? That's all baked in?
Yeah.
Great, okay. All right, so do we have a motion?
I move to approve Tuesday, October 15, 2019, as the closing date for, for article, for article submission for the January 13th, 2020 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item 11. Along those same lines, potential January 2020 Special Town Meeting articles. Now, we have listed some articles that we think may be, may be candidates for the January 2020 Special Town Meeting. And this is really just to begin the conversation. I don't know that we have anything specific on any of these. Some of these may come from other boards and committees, but we thought we would just begin the conversation on, on some of them. And so we have listed 11, well, actually 10 potential, and then kind of a placeholder 11. The first one is the FY '20 Budget Adjustments. And, you know, that is certainly one of the key items. We, we know now that we, we've known since we had the trash contract issue that we've got a budget deficit for this year of about $675,000. And so we need to deal with that. And we can't be in deficit, so that's going to be one of the main purposes of the, of the January 2020 Special Town Meeting. We need to figure out how to close that deficit. And the reason, as we stated last time, for moving it, or having the, one of the reasons for having the meeting in January rather than October is we'll have a clearer idea of the revenue picture at that point and of free cash at that point. And, and that will help Town Meeting and its decision on how to close that deficit. So that's, that's the first one. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts or comments on that? Nope, seeing none. Two is the Fund Investment Guidelines, and this came from the Treasurer last time. And I know there's been some additional discussion on that. I think Treasurer wants to submit it again.
Correct, yeah. And present it, re-present it to the Finance Committee, the Subcommittee of this Board.
Right. Three is the Civil Service Age Limit. That's something that came up from Chief Grant, Fire Chief Grant, last time. And it was a little bit late in the process. And so we think that he's going to want to submit that again. And, you know, maybe, you know, my understanding is he'll have to, you may want to consult with Chief King on that, and we'll see how that, but we expect that that may help, happen as well. Four is the Regulating and Ensuring Short-Term Rentals. This is really the Airbnb, Airbnb issue, and whether the town wants to have regulations for Airbnb. And this is, this is an issue that's come up. And I don't want to, I don't want to dominate the discussion. Has any thoughts on, if anyone has any thoughts on, on, you know, two through four, which, or one through four, please, please chime in.
Well, I did have a question on item number one, the Budget Adjustment. So getting back to State Senator Timmeltie earlier, there was a line item there. I know the cherry sheets came out, Mike, and we were reimbursed to the tune, well, according to Senator Timmeltie's remarks, roughly $630,000. So will that offset the deficit for that, for the, for the whole trash situation that we're found ourselves in?
No, no, no. This is, this is a separate issue that, that we need to resolve. And unfortunately, the trash contracts were awarded, the bids came in after Town Meeting approved the Public Works budget and the Stormwater Enterprise budget. So yard waste is actually treated as a stormwater, stormwater enterprise item. So that budget and the Public Works budget, which includes the solid waste budget, it's, it's, it's what was voted on by Town Meeting in May. Yeah.
Oh, nuts, all right.
All right, next on the list we have, we anticipate that the trustees of the library may want to come forth with an article on one-day liquor licenses for the library. Currently, there is no liquor allowed in any town building for any time, at any, at any time, for any purpose. And so, so we anticipate that that might be an article. We've, Mike, maybe you can talk about item six, renaming the council on aging?
Yeah, there was a whisper a year or two ago when I got here about possibly changing the name of the Council on Aging. Some, some of these wonderful centers that we sit in are, have been renamed the Center for Living. You know, I, I appreciate it. I know Director Sullivan appreciates it, and she would support it wholeheartedly. But it's just, you know, I know, I know it's only a name, but, but it means a lot. And this, this is a very vibrant and energetic building, Monday to Friday, all day long. And it is truly a center for living, so I, I do appreciate it. And I, I would support it, so.
Language is powerful.
And then the next one, the creation of the Landing Revolving Account. Mike, if you want, you want to take that?
Yeah, that's what I had touched upon earlier with respect to taking the money that comes into the Landing and making sure that it stays down there and creating a revolving account for it. So what comes in will go out to the Landing only.
And the Ulan Ring contract, is that, do you want to just take that? Or Tony can, one of you can just kind of give a quick highlight of what we might expect there?
Yeah, so again, they need to thank the Senator for the half a million dollars that he secured down there. The ring project is coming along great. The state DCR Commissioner Rory and his group, Baker Polito Administration, have been making some sizable repairs down there. The compressors have all been replaced, installed, ready to go. The board, the old boards have been taken down. New boards should be delivered. Was supposed to be delivered last week. I anticipate their delivery this week. A month from now, that ring's going to open, so it'll be here before you know it. But we're currently working through a one-year permit with Curry College, with, with DCR. And Curry College is our anchor tenant, so we're looking for a longer-term deal. In order to do that, anything more than three years, Town Meeting would have to approve. So that, that's what this article would speak to.
And then the Randolph Avenue Betterment as well?
Yeah, so Town Engineer John Thompson came to this board probably about six months ago. There's a group of homes on Randolph Ave from St. Elizabeth's heading towards Gun Hill Street that are on a septic system that would like to join the town's water and sewer system. So this is a betterment process that needs Town Meeting approval. There was a similar one fashioned probably about a decade ago up off of Randolph Ave, and obviously needed Town Meeting approval as well, so.
And the idea for the warrant delivery by law?
Yeah, so just in, in this day and age when the town is looking to try to do things more efficiently, many towns are going the route of not printing so many and mailing so many Town Meeting warrants to residences. We order too many, we end up with extras. Anybody that's been to Town Meeting, we bring a bucket to Town Meeting each night, and they're gone. Where are the ones that we mailed to the house? And, you know, so it's, it's, it's more efficient. Again, it's preliminary. There are some communities that have, have taken hold of it. We're doing some cost analysis on it to see what we could save and maybe use that money for something else. Not getting away from the warrant, these communities print them, keep them at Town Hall. You put it online, people can view it, print it themselves, that, that type of thing. But it's a sizable savings on an annual basis. But there would be warrants available for people, but just not in the, in the magnitude or scope that, that we're normally presenting to them.
And again, these are all good ideas, or ideas that need to be fleshed out anyway. And we may have, and we can expect, I think, articles from the Planning Board, since this is, you know, this is really the Planning Board, this is really a zoning, purpose of this is to make sure you deal with all the zoning articles. So, you know, for, for planning purposes, you know, as we get more articles from the Planning Board, some of these things may be, may fall away and, and go to, go to May, go to the annual Town Meeting. Some of the things that are less critical, but Ms. Collins? Some of the things that are less critical, but Ms. Collins?
Um, one thing that I, I hadn't noticed before is that there's no mention of the small cell that we've been looking at.
Yeah, that was on our last sheet. Maybe it fell off the sheet, but the aesthetics, the aesthetics for five G, small cell towers.
Right, so I just didn't know if town council had been working on that, and something came up, or?
Yeah, it was on our previous list.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, great.
And obviously, we'd, we'd appreciate the planning board's input on, and
That's what John would matter.
Building Commissioner.
Yeah, I think that, that may be why it fell off our list, because we thought it might be better on their list. So, that might be, that may be why it fell off. So, I'm, I'm pretty sure, it'll get there.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll get there, one way or the other. Anything else on, on this? I mean, obviously, we have a lot to work through over the next few months in advance of our now October fifteenth warrant closing date, but, but this is to begin the conversation.
What a beginning.
I know, what a beginning, I know. Anything else? All right, item twelve, a discussion update on the regional Seagate meeting. I believe Ms. Collins and Mr. Wells went there, and so perhaps Ms. Collins can give us a, an update on that.
Well, I, I would think that Mr. Wells has a lot of very insightful things that, that he took away from this meeting, so I, I'd welcome hearing from him. But just in brief, there were representatives from Massachusetts EPA, from FEMA, from, I think, every other coastal community that's, that's looking at this initiative, and they had a, an, a great array of people who are working on this from a variety of standpoints. So, I, I won't go into all their names, but they had a Fulbright and Port Authority scholar from Stony Brook University School of Marine and Atmospheric Science. He's doing his, his doctoral work there. He's an economist, though, but specializing in infrastructure for ocean and marine. And he did a great analysis, I thought, of the UMass study, but also made a great case for coming at it from a different standpoint of what's the cost benefit, and where can they really meet to, to bring something that's useful and yet affordable, relatively speaking. And so, to, to find that solution, rather than saying, well, if we pick this solution, does it work or not financially? Then there was a gentleman from Rogers and Gray Insurance, and he's on the National Flood Association Legislative Committee, and he's part of the Mass Coastal Coalition. He's certified in floodplain management, and talked about how seawalls need to be built forty inches higher, starting now. And talked also about how by working with the Army Corps of Engineers on the project, it would come out as a certified levy, which would reduce insurance rates for property owners and towns. And that, that's, I can't stress how important that is. And, and there's, there are only specific types of projects that would qualify, so you, you would have to have sort of a continuous wall with seagates, as, as has been proposed, but, but I won't go into more technical things. Also, Christopher Agostino, who's local person from Roberto Israel and Weiner Law Firm, talked about how the risk has been pushed from the public sector to the private sector, and that's reflected in legal contracts, and actually now is showing up in 10K filings. And at the St. Regis Project in town, they actually have a billboard on the sidewalk talking about that risk. So, you know, they're, this is, that's quite a development. So, one thing that Bill Golden mentioned was that London's closed its seagates a hundred and fifty times, and has experienced no flooding and no environmental degradation due to storm surge. So, I was fairly impressed with that. And, and the next meeting is in October, so they're gonna have a bigger room to accommodate more people. And I've asked a few follow-up questions, one of which is, you know, what's the process for people, or for municipalities to get involved and join the group officially, and, and a few other things? So, if anyone has follow-up questions, he would, he'd love to have them.
I can be the conduit for that, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I could be the conduit for questions, if you wanna.
Did he lead the discussion?
He started off the discussion, yes, so he, he led us through.
Kinda like AMC?
Yes, yes, but, but each, each expert, if you will, got up and did a presentation. I, I did ask if in the future they would either record it somehow or do minutes, because actually, that young gentleman who's doing the economics work, Mateo Mezak, I thought he did a great job of, of explaining things in lay terms, but, but it would have been better for people to be able to have his slides, and
Right. How many people were there?
So, oh, I would say there were maybe between thirty and fifty people?
Did Mr. Golden happen to give any updates as to any other municipalities that have opted in?
That have joined? I may have missed that, I was a few minutes late because of traffic. But, but I, I can ask that, or we can have Mike ask that.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
He's dying to hear from us, so, we can ask him plenty of questions.
So, that was the ask, when he was here before, his ask was for, to join the group, and what was the?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars.
Quincy has contributed a hundred thousand.
Okay. And so, so I guess, one question, Melinda, is, did, did that, did this meeting give you any insight, one way or the other, about whether the utility of joining that group and spending that ten thousand dollars?
Well, on the face of it, I, I think that if, if we look at New Bedford and the success they've had since nineteen sixty-one, and if, if you look at similar projects around the world, I, I would say it's money well-spent, because if, if one municipality doesn't do this, or, or join in, it doesn't mean that it won't happen, but you don't have a place at the table, and I'm not sure that, I, I don't know what we might miss. If we had to give a hundred thousand dollars, I don't think it could happen for us. But, but I think it's definitely worth more discussion. My one, I wouldn't say a reservation, but the one thing I would like to do is to sit down, if this is a storm surge working group, to really talk with other people from municipalities. I mean, the harbor, I don't think the gentleman is a harbor master, he had marine something or harbor something on the back of his, with front brain tree. And actually, Vivian Lee, who was responsible for a lot of the, yeah, Riverwalk was there too. I mean, there were, there were a, a lot of people who've been involved in the, the harbor and the waterfront for decades at this meeting. So, I think this is something that, that, you know, people who are knowledgeable really believe in. But as I said, I, I think it would be great to have an opportunity to sit down around a table and talk with people. Obviously, we can't all go, but
Yeah, what I envisioned, the day we took the boat ride out to the harbor islands in Boston, is private developers that are building. We went out, and as you head east, you see all the development going on in the seaport. There's, there's a large investment going on in there. So, I, the way I would envision it, I'm, I'm not Bill Golden, is you get a small contribution from your, your local governments, you get a, a state buy-in, and then you get federal and, and private dollars to, to help build this. It's, it's, it's expensive, but I think you start at the state, at the local level, and work your way up to
Try to build momentum.
Build momentum, and I think most of your money's gonna come from private development.
Right, and, and given the fact that, that the risk has been shifted onto the private sector, I mean, you think about, somebody had mentioned that the first floor, which is all the retail, restaurants, things like that, for those to go down for months to a year when there's a major flood, that's just not, it, it, I mean, it's not something that, that, you know, the city could really take, so.
So, Melinda, let me ask you this. Is it, is it premature to, to put that on, and Tony as well? Is it premature to put that on for discussion, actually, joining the group? Is it premature to put that on for the twenty-first, or do we wanna, do we wanna consider it, you know, later on in the fall? We may not be ready.
Yeah, I mean, I frankly, here's what I can't reconcile, right? One of two things are gonna happen. This is either gonna get built, or it's not gonna be. Now, if it gets built, and it, and it performs the way that it's designed or advertised to, to perform, we're gonna benefit from it. Now, bear with me for a minute. So, you, you contribute the 10K, you devote the man-hours, that investment is so minor that we have quote-unquote input, but, but really, how much input are we getting? So, to me, I love the idea of this, and Michael raises a good point. I mean, the seaport's like a whole nother world. Like, it's, buildings are popping up there every two weeks, and that is tens of millions, hundreds of millions, maybe over a billion dollars' worth of investment down there. Nobody wants to see that compromised or damaged in, in a flood, in any way, shape, or form. So, if something like this, this project would take years and years, hundreds of millions, I mean, I don't know what the cost of it is, billions of dollars maybe. If it gets built, it gets built. If it doesn't, it, it doesn't, we're gonna benefit from that. So, I, I'm not really sure, Michael, you raised a good point, which was your momentum, and, and, and town and city buy-ins. And so, when you're trying to sell this idea and, and fund it and, and get investors, you can say the following, the city Quincy, the town of Elton, the town of Hall, and so on and so forth. And you want a nice, long list that you can draw upon, but ultimately, I don't see the value in this for, for, for the town.
Well, we could, we can have the discussion. You know, I guess, you know, one, one way of looking at it is, you know, if, if it's, if everyone took that view
We'd get nowhere.
We'd get nowhere, right? So, so if we want to both make a statement that this is important for this community, and I think it is, and we want to inspire other communities to get involved so that it happens, then that, that's a reason to do it. But I, but you make a good point, Tony. So, so maybe, Melinda, I don't know if you wanna comment further on?
Well, I think I, I take both your, your points. I'd be interested to hear what residents think, and I, I'd like to hear from Richard and Katie. I, I also, because there isn't a solution that's being proposed necessarily, if you look at the UMass study, it's not a continuous series of gates. And I'm, I'm not sure that we would get something that would also protect the entire, you know, coast of fifteen communities if we're leaving it to someone else. I'm, I'm not positive, but I think those are great things to maybe discuss with Bill Golden and, and some of the other communities that, that, you know, our, our neighbors, Rain Tree and Quincy, and, and I, I think, though, that it is something to, to consider, that maybe we do nothing. But I think there's a lot to hear from. Also, since there's another meeting in October, that's one reason I asked for a timeline, because I'm interested in understanding what that meeting in October is for, because it may be that we're prematurely saying, well, we need to, to, to jump on this. It is true, you wanna get started sooner rather than later, because permitting and all those things will take a while, but
All right, so perhaps, you know, I thought maybe we, we might put it on for September, but maybe, we'll see, maybe, maybe, maybe it should be after that meeting in October.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I, again, I'd be interested to, to see what, what Richard thought, having been there, because he would have taken different things away from the meeting than I did.
Sure, sure, all right. Well, we'll, I think we're, I think we'll have a, a pretty big agenda for the twenty-first, so maybe we put it on for one of the September dates, and, and talk about it further then. Does that make sense? Okay, all right. Moving on, item thirteen, acceptance of a donation from the Milton Rotary Club for the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept a one thousand dollar donation from the Milton Rotary Club Foundation to the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition.
Second.
Motion, and, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, you, you mentioned a thousand dollars, Tony, you did?
I did, yeah.
You did, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I was reading something else, and I apologize. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to the Milton Rotary Club for this important, very important work, and for a great, great donation.
Yes, that's very nice of them.
All right, item fourteen, approval, approval of a one-day liquor license for the Milton Club.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Milton Club at one ninety-three Central Avenue for Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, for a wedding.
Before I second that, Jennifer, can you give us the tally?
Twenty-six.
This is number twenty-six of thirty. Okay, so we have four remaining. Outstanding, okay.
There was an event on July twentieth, a reunion event that was canceled. So, this will replace that one.
I see, okay.
For those following at home.
Yes.
Twenty-six, yeah, there was twenty-six, this is now twenty-six again. There was an event that was canceled on July twentieth, so.
Excellent, excellent. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fifteen, appointment of the, appointment for the Group Insurance Advisory Committee.
I move to appoint Mary Fitzgerald of five twenty-five Canton Avenue to the Group Insurance Advisory Committee through February of two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item sixteen, Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will be briefed this evening. Just wanna mention a couple of events that are coming up. The plastic bag ban will take effect on September fourteenth. I just wanna remind people and the businesses in town who are already making arrangements to become a greener community. On September nineteenth, the Traffic Mitigation Committee will hold their third and final public information and listening, listening session in this building at seven o'clock. So, that's Thursday, September nineteenth, seven PM, for the third and final traffic mitigation info session. And I just wanna wish Chief Appraiser Bob Bushway well. He had a procedure on Monday. We hear that he's, he's doing okay. We just want him to get well, so. Hope you feel better, Bob.
Great, we all echo that.
A hundred percent, yes.
Item, in particular, and Bob came in a couple of weeks ago with a fabulous report of all the things he's done in the department, and, and he's just doing a great job, so, so hopefully, he'll be back in the saddle soon. Item seventeen, Cheers Report, oh, Ms. Collins?
I'm sorry. We had a, a merchant ask quite a while ago if there would be a procedure to get some relief for having ordered bags well before the ban was even being talked about, and I didn't know if that process actually has been developed.
I will check with Hillary, yeah. I know we talked about this previously at that time, but I haven't followed through on it, but I'm sure, if I know Hillary, she has, so I will get back to you on that.
I, I think she probably has too, because I've talked to her about it a couple of times, but it was, of course, on the early side. But I just wanted to make sure, because this person really, really wants to do the right thing, and doesn't want the bags to end up in the landfill, though, which is what would happen to them, so.
Right. Yeah, I think I heard this week that McDonald's went to paper straws, and they're not recyclable because of the weight of them, or there was some, you know. because of the weight of them, or there was some, you know, they're trying to become green, but again, it's not something that fits the restrictions these days, so.
All right, moving on to item 17, the Chair's Report, nothing substantive, other than to report on what we're looking at in terms of our meeting dates in the future, we're looking at two weeks from today, August 21st, a potential for a meeting on September 4th, not sure if we're going to need that, on September 10th, we're going to be, we'll have attendance at the Route 138 car-to-update meeting, and then our regularly scheduled meetings on September 11th and September 25th, so that's what it's looking like in terms of our meetings going forward. Members' Report, I believe we have on the agenda Ms. Collins reporting on the Smart Growth Alliance meeting.
Yes, I was fortunate enough to attend the most recent Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and I appreciate everyone's warm welcome, I met lots of wonderful folks there, and they had special guests, Andre Leroux, who's the Executive Director for Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance, and also Dottie Fulgenetti, who is the Director of Local Leadership there, and Bill Clark, our Director of Planning and Community Development, also joined us. There was a short presentation by Dottie and Andre, and really, the upshot of that was that we need to build coalitions in order to bring Milton into the future, whatever it is that the future that we deem should be, but they were encouraging and ready to work with merchants and the town, so that, I think everyone received that message well, and then, in relation to some of their questions, a couple of things came up, a question about whether we actually use the master plan, and Bill talked at length, and I think effectively, about the work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been doing, and we also talked about how the master plan guides, how we think of our goals, and the initiatives that we try to support as a board and office, actually, and another specific topic was age and dementia-friendly initiatives, and actually, it was age, but I think that it's clear that age and dementia-friendly go together in a way that every community really needs to support, and what's friendly for us as we age is friendly, you know, throughout the spectrum of aging, so Sandy Albright from AARP had come to us last year, and I understand she's not working on this anymore, but Dottie Fulgenetti, who is also the Select Board Chair for Easton, one of the things that she does is help towns get started on these initiatives, and Deborah Felton, who is the Executive Director at Fuller Village, is very interested in helping us find a resident who would like to further this, so I'll be hopefully meeting with them in some time in September to see what we can do and bring this, that to the board, to see if it's something that they would endorse, and that's it.
Great, thank you, thank you, Melinda. Tony, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Item 20, Citizen Speaker Response, certainly thank you to Senator Timmeltie for the update and for all the great work that's going on at the State House with the budget and other matters, is there anything else, Citizen Speaker Response, no?
Just thank you.
Yeah?
I will say one thing, the $7,200 he secured for the electric vehicle charging station may net us two locations.
Oh, that's great.
In working with power auctions and Eversource, we think it's going to be about 4,000 per installation, so the Worf Street location in the municipal lot, and then we were looking at the municipal lot across from Thomas Funeral Hall on Granite Ave.
Oh, great.
Oh, that would be great.
So his funding source may end up accomplishing the goal we were trying to achieve in two years and one year, so, thank you again.
That's great. Future agenda items, anything to be added to the list?
I don't have anything.
No, all right.
Is Mr. Chase Berkeley and the water and soil rates on there?
That'll be, yes, that'll be on for the 21st.
He wants to come in on the 21st to set the water rates.
Okay, we'll be here, we'll be here. Item 22, Community Happenings, we have, we want to encourage everyone to be aware of, and if they can, attend the Milton Police Cookout at the Milton Police Department Headquarters tomorrow night, Thursday, August 8th, from 5:30 to 8:30, it's always a great event, a lot of great family activities, bring the kids, bring the dogs, and bring yourselves, and have a great time. And Sunday, August 11th, the Suffolk Resolves House is having an open house from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, anything else that we should trumpet here?
Well, trumpet, I mean, stop going off that word, the, those wonderful Wednesday night concerts.
Oh, right, yep, yep.
We only have a couple of those left, we've had a couple of rainouts, but as Senator Timmeltie mentioned, his was rained out today, rescheduled for the 4th, and they're always a great time.
Great, great.
One more, kudos if I might, so this is the last week of the Parks and Recreation Summer Camp, the job that the Parks Commissioners, Paul DiMano, Bonnie DeVore, all of the camp counselors do to make that happen is amazing.
Yes.
Been in operations most of my adult life, that operation is top-notch from start to finish, what the commissioners do to put it in place, and how it's executed, and there's buses going everywhere, and, you know, you see the orange shirts flying around Canterbury Lake Park, or I think today they were paintballing, and it's just, it's phenomenal, and it's great, and I'm sure they'll be happy when Friday gets here and it's all over, but I know there's a nine-year-old in my family that woke up every morning looking forward to it, so, kudos to everyone involved.
Yep, important to recognize, important to recognize the work of the park commissioners and the park department, and particularly Paul and Bonnie, and the work they're doing. So, that's item 22. Item 23, which is to go into executive session, what I'd like to do, because I, both for the people here and for the viewers at home, we have a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund, what I'd like to do is suspend our meeting of the Select Board, so we can have our meeting of the, so people don't have to wait around during our executive session, so we can have our meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund, and then go back to our meeting of the Select Board, so we can go into executive session, so we don't have, you know, people, you know, seeing a blank screen at home, and, you know, people here. So I think it's okay for us to, you know, if we have a motion to suspend our proceedings for the purposes of going into a meeting of the Governor Stoughton's Trust Fund, so I'll make a motion to suspend the Select Board proceedings for the purpose of going into a meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund, with the idea that we will return to the Select Board after our meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now I'm going to call to order, now that we are suspended from the Select Board, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund, and we have three items, well, two items really, on our agenda, first is a discussion of the town farm barn, say that three times fast, town farm barn demolition, and I think, I think we have some materials on that, and maybe Ms. Collins can lead us through this discussion.
Well, would you, I...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's, yeah, no, Vice Chair Collins and myself have had a couple of conversations about it, and the three years I've been here, I've had a couple of conversations with Building Commissioner Joe Prondak about it, I passed around some paperwork, I think it may or may not warrant a site visit of this board to go up and take a look at the state of the barn, it's beyond dilapidation.
Excellent.
In Joe's professional opinion, something like that could be done in short order to the tune of about $30,000, I know they priced it out a couple of years ago, there is some material there that Vice Chair Collins had talked about, about possibly preserving some of the walls of the foundation there that might, but the main structure, the main, what you see from the outside, Joe will tell you it only looks worse on the inside, so I think it's for discussion for this group, and if you, if we can do a site visit, or I can, you know, walk one or two of you up there and just take a look at it, but it's not getting better, and it's something that should probably come down sooner rather than later.
And I understand the Historical Commission understands that it's unsafe and not really well to be rehabilitated, and that we have good pictures if we were able to do any sort of replication or anything.
Right. Tony? So, I wonder if it makes sense, I think it makes sense, to have a proposal, to have, I'd like to actually see it again, so I will take you up on that, you know, before we vote on this, I'd like to go see it, I'm sure, I'm sure you're right, I'm sure Joe's right, that we need to demolish it, I think it probably makes sense to get an estimate before we vote on it, so we know exactly what the cost is, and what they're going to be doing, and it may make sense to get the Historical Commission here to just confirm that there are no issues from their perspective, and so, tell me what you think, but I, you know, my view is, get an estimate, you know, have the site visit, which I'll go and do again, get an estimate, have Joe in, and maybe have the Historical Commission in all one night, and just do it, and maybe we can do it on the 21st, is that, am I being too bureaucratic, Melinda, or is it...
Well, I don't know, I mean, would it be enough to have a conversation with the Chair of the Historical Commission to make sure?
Maybe me, you, and Steve O'Donnell take a walk up there one day.
Okay.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that they're on board, I hate to do anything, and so, you know, it'll have to be the group, they'll have to, you know, they'll have to, you know, as a group, sign off on it, I mean, I think we just want to make sure that they agree, I'm sure they will, but we just want to go through that step, and then, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and at that time, he can identify specific items that he thinks should be restored or salvaged from the demolition process.
Right, I mean, that, one of the difficulties with salvaging things like timbers is that you normally, I understand from Mr. Prondak, you have to do that from inside, building is not safe to enter, so it, there, we may be really limited, and it could be cost prohibitive to try to save timbers and things, but the foundation actually, the stones from the foundation could possibly be repurposed, so I'm hoping they can take care with that.
Can we get an updated estimate?
Yeah.
So maybe we get an updated estimate, so we know really what the cost is, and then, and then I, you know, I guess, we don't need Joe to come in, I mean, Joe's, you know, his view is his view, and it's, we can all, so maybe just an estimate, and make sure the Historical Commission has signed off on it, and then we go.
I mean, is it possible that they, you know, back when this recommendation was made from 2007, that the Historical Commission was already, was brought in at that point to, and their advice was sought, so we might be able to eliminate that step, just with a phone call, Steve, were you involved? I mean, whoever played Steve's role 12 years ago, right, maybe there was some sort of documentation, but it looks as though this was tried, this was attempted to be set in motion in 2007, and for whatever reason, it wasn't, who knows why, it's not that important, but, you know, to quote Joe Prondak, he's determined that there are several major structural problems, July 27th, 2007, so that was 12 years ago, there were structural problems 12 years ago, I mean, stands to reason those were just...
My structural problem's a lot worse than they were 12 years ago, so.
Right, right, well, yeah, I mean, you go back to 1999 and look at the language there, well, I do like the idea though, of inviting Chair O'Donnell to take a walk with the two of you, and maybe he'll decline and say, I don't need to do that, take it down, and we're good, but...
Yeah, and you and Joe had suggested that there might be something that's salvageable from a historic perspective, so I think it's worthy of...
Right, he would be a good person to point that out, yeah.
All right, so we'll make sure that happens in the next two weeks, we'll see if we can get an estimate, and then we'll take action on this on the 21st, does that, does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for doing the walk.
All right, item three, Asset Use Plan.
Right, so I'm wondering if it makes sense to defer this until we have Richard and Katie with us, but I'll just, I'll just, because we've brought it up, and people might be watching, the Governor Stoughton Fund, you know, as everyone knows, received $5 million from the sale of the property that's now becoming Milton Woods in the process of, and we've had the benefit of having the Martin and Swift trustees come in when Norine Dolan comes in, and I just think it may be a good idea for us to sit down with them, maybe the Finance Committee, or a couple of members from the Governor Stoughton Trustees, and just to talk with them, see what their experience has been, and to create some sort of policy going forward, because every election season, the constitution of this board, or the trust, the trustees changes, so I just would like to start exploring that, and, I mean, we have historical uses for the funds that we have had, and I have copies of, for everyone to outline what those have been, but we may wish to entertain other types of uses, such as home repair programs for low and moderate income families, or something like that, so, but I think that's something that all five should be here for.
I agree, but I think, but I think it makes good sense, when you have a, I mean, 5.6 million at this point, when you have a $5.6 million asset, you should have a plan on how to use that asset, so I think it makes good sense to do it, and it also makes sense to have Katie and Richard weigh in as well, so, and to start, you know, this obviously makes sense to start the discussion, it's not something we'll determine in one session, but I think it makes good sense to start the discussion.
Right, well, and as Katie had given us a draft last year for discussion, and she mentioned that the principal amount that wasn't to be drawn down was at $195,000, little more actually, and now we have $5 million, and I think we need to discuss what kind of preservation we want to see, so.
Yeah, I think Richard's expertise, working for a charitable organization as well, would be immense.
Yes.
If he could be in the discussion.
Right, he, yes, I think he needs to be here.
Okay, all right, so we'll put that again on for the 21st, and that is the last item, the last item is a motion to adjourn, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund.
I move to adjourn this session of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we will return to, we will return to our meeting of the Milton Select Board, returned from our suspension of that meeting, and we will move to item 23, which is the executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town administrator, so the, I will make a motion to enter into executive session, the purpose of conducting discussions, strategy discussions in preparation for contract nego- discussions, strategy discussions, in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, that being the town administrator, not to return to open session after that's completed. This will be a roll call vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes. Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
We are adjourning to executive session. Thank you all, and we will see you again on August 21st, 2019. Have a great week, great week, thank you.